Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Breen Garden.
Here.
Ms. Calvin.
Here.
Ms. Edred. Ms. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Peters.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Denver.
Here.
Committee members present for an absent.
Okay, guess next on the agenda is courtesy before, but I don't see a need for that until we make some discussion, or would you rather have that first, or what?
There are no action items. So there will be a courtesy, you will have the application of courtesy before at the end, but this one's usually reserved for action items and there aren't any.
Uh, you want to take it, will we begin, I think? We're gonna discuss, uh, the Hunt feasibility facility study tonight, we're gonna discuss a couple items that were taken off of that study. We met one fifteen twenty-four, uh, myself, uh, Bill, Mike, uh, Mr. Wall and Dr. Omer. We met and we discussed the, the different things that were, I guess we discussed mainly the priority items that were taken off of this Hunt study, which was the high school, Avis Elementary and Saliesburg. So I'm gonna go, maybe Colonel and Dr. Omer, you can, you wanna go back or you want me, I have it in my notes here. This all started with the Hunt study back in twenty twenty. And then I think SiteLogic came onboard as a construction management for the HVAC system of which easier money was used. Uh, Mark Wall and Doc Dormer created a smaller list out of the Hunt feasibility study of which, as I mentioned before, and I can go over those different items here, that they thought were priority items. And remember, the board voted last fall to bet one million dollars towards these items. SiteLogic updated the cost estimates on these projects, of which was the high school, which was mainly the dust collection system. Avis Elementary, I can go over a couple of those here in a minute, which was mainly the boiler system. Two boilers out there that were going to be replaced. And the control system in Sal, which was the, again, the boiler system up there. But the Avis control system was Mark Wall's, Mr. Wall's top priority out of this entire Hunt thing, study that was done. The, I guess the current control system, Mr. Wall, you can interject if you want at any time, is kind of outdated, more or less, it wasn't getting the heat to the right classrooms and keeping them at the right temperature, so that was the main thing, the control unit. You're gonna replace that, you're gonna replace the boiler system there. The committee discussed the idea of doing the boilers at the Avis, since the contractor will have, and again, we discussed that more because that will be one mobilization from SiteLogic, I guess, rather than doing two different sites. But another, and I guess comes right down to doing, instead of doing Avis and Sal, it would save us a little bit of money if we just concentrated on one site, with boiler installation. And I believe that you were gonna meet with SiteLogic, I believe, yesterday to come up with some more
Thursday.
They're here.
They met on Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah, Thursday, I'm sorry, last week. So out of the Hunt feasibility study, Mr. Wall and Doc Dormer come up with these, basically four things. The high school, I'll read them off for the sake of the audience here, was to replace the existing dust collection system. And, uh, Mike and myself and Bill went through that, and Mr. Wall went through that one evening last week here. And that, that dust collection, that whole area up there is just a, to, to me, I think, to the other committee members was just a disaster area. It's just, I don't know how you could conduct a class in there. I mean, some of the, I'm sure homeowners had better, uh, systems than what was actually there, so it definitely needs repaired. But I think the problem there is the upfront, we, we might be looking at retirement and we might be moving those kids into another classroom, I believe downstairs correctly, right?
Yeah, and one of the things that I talked about with the committee is that other classroom, that other lab space will also need some similar upgrades, that even though there is a system, dust collection system, it's old. So regardless, I believe you need a dust collection system, that's my recommendation. It may vary, the costs may vary a little depending on which room you do.
Right.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen has his microphone up.
Uh, after looking at both rooms, excuse me, there was some discussion about moving what is going on upstairs, downstairs, and keeping what's down there also, at the same time. We talked it over with, uh, Mr. Bitner while we were standing there, and he, he was along for the tour also. But we, because of what we saw upstairs and the ventilation system that's there is pretty much worthless. So there's sawdust everywhere, it's just a fire hazard, in my opinion, could catch on fire at any point in time. To put a new system in, you're talking about putting a unit down on the bait, on the ground outside the building, running a new duck work in and doing a lot of work there. Uh, the room that's right beside the, the actual area where they do the, the construction stuff is a classroom with tables there that they're doing varnishing and painting and all of that, and there's not really any kind of ventilation system in that half of the room either. So the way I understand, Mark, you can change this if I'm wrong, but if, if the price that we had for what that project right now only entails the one side of that classroom, it does not entail doing the actual classroom itself.
E two, E two oh one, E two hundred, it would just be E two oh one.
Okay. So there's been times where I've heard that, you know, there's fumes out in the hall, you can smell it, and it's just not healthy. So that brought up the conversation about maybe tying the two construction trades programs together in the same area with an upgrade to the existing system that's down there right now, where I don't think you'd have to run as much duck work to the new, to the existing system, because it's already plumed in to like the areas where they do the, the work. So you'd need a new unit outside, but technically I don't think you would need everything inside the room. Is that fair to say?
To move it downstairs in the existing area, which is, which was a heck of a lot nicer.
Right. So that was what I was thinking, or what we had talked about, was if we brought those two together, there would be some scheduling issues that we'd have to kind of deal with and figure out, but between what I was talking about with Mr. Bitner and what he was saying, he seems to think that we could possibly do something like that in that area. So if we did that, then we'd still have both instructors there for now until we decide if somebody's retiring or not, but they'd be in the same location, the upstairs rooms could then be done with whatever in the future. So you could do, renovate it to be another classroom, or two classrooms for that matter.
Right.
But am I sort of on the right track there, Harry, with what I was saying, or what we talked about the other day?
Right, and then when, I think the other thing downstairs, we moved it downstairs, both the classroom that we had upstairs, moved downstairs, one because of the room and stuff like that, we thought we, like you suggested, from down there, playing college, we'd have a classroom situation inside there while the other kids are outside working, that way we could, we'd have room for both, both the ones that we, the ones that we moved down in the regular classroom, which are already scheduled in that area. So the work, there'd have to be some scheduling, we changed it on their part, but it's very workable that way. Any, you don't want anything to add on that, or?
Nothing to add.
That was the high school there, I'd like to say the, the system up there was really integrated, it definitely needs something. Both, both that, and the storage room in the back there was, man, it was bad, it's just bad to say the least. Uh, so again, that was, I think Mike covered that pretty well there. The second one, on the scope of work that we're gonna be looking at, would have been the Avis Elementary, we took a tour of that the same night, uh, the four of us. And again, what we looked at mainly was disconnecting the existing boilers, the piping and everything else in there, there were two boilers in there that Mr. Wall thought says needed replaced, along with the control panel, and I guess it's a, it's a natural gas system, which is good. Uh, we walked through the rest of the school there, it was, the school was really in pretty good shape there, looked, looked really nice compared to what we had just seen at the high school up there. Already, and I can say three two there, if you have that, is, uh, replacing the control panel, which I think was the, the biggest part of the problem there. Gonna replace the control panel, I think it's, uh, what they recommend is to replace the boilers at the same time. So you gotta replace the two, two boilers basically with one, right, Mr. Wall?
Two boilers, two for two.
Two for two, okay. And then again, they'd have to test them out and go with that. Uh, third, third recommendation on Saliesburg Elementary. I did not go to that one for various reasons. I think, uh, Mr. Allen, Sir Donna went there along with Mr. Wall, you wanna add anything on that, Mike or Bill?
No, sir.
I mean, the same thing was recommended there, that was the third one, that was to disconnect the existing boiler, and I think there's one boiler system there. Replace the valve, probably replace, they didn't look at all of this here, but probably replace the circuit system and the control panel and everything else that goes along with it, and then test it out. I'm not gonna read through all of these things, sure, everybody has that in front of them, I believe.
So the controls up there are already changed over from air to electric, so just so everybody knows that that project took place, I don't know, years ago, a while ago. So if you were to do anything there, that portion of the project would not have to be done for the most part. You may have to add a couple extra valves and stuff like that, but it, you really wouldn't have to go through the whole process of like you're going to do at Avis, 'cause you're gonna rip out all the airlines and put all the wiring in and everything to, to do the controls over. But, uh, that's as far as Saliesburg goes, the, the boiler seems like it's in decent shape and seems to be running well at this point in time. Uh, the biggest thing that we talked about there was the domestic hot water and getting it set up with a new coil, basically, uh, getting rid of, there's a huge tank there. Uh, basically put an inline, uh, heat exchanger in, so that was one of the major other issues at that, at that facility.
How many boilers, Mike, are there?
There's just one there.
Just one, okay.
One boiler there, two at, two at Avis.
Yeah, they, they, the idea was to put two in at Sal, two at Avis. Uh, so you have a redundancy system there to make up if something goes wrong with one.
Okay, then, then, any, any other questions on those four? The, the cost of the work, basically here, on the back page here, the dust collection system at the high school was roughly two hundred and thirty-five thousand, is that where you got the new estimate on?
No, we, we, I don't know if you wanna speak to that, Mark, or?
We revisited that C one-on-one, that's the class, the new classroom downstairs, we all visited last week. I met, um, SiteLogic Engineering here last week to get a revised cost on that, we probably won't see a cost till probably early March for that.
So would you estimate that cost to be higher than what this cost is on this?
Uh, it's, I would, I would definitely think it would be lower.
Okay.
Because like you said, we're not going to be, I'm out at the E two oh one room, we'd have to, the pipe would be cut out, we'd have to pump it out, vents, we're essentially replacing duck work, you know, dust collector. The C one-on-one. But the way they called last week, they probably expect the same, the same dust collector, so they, they probably have that cost, this is gonna be a job working later.
Okay.
And again, I think if we do get what we're expecting down there in that area, something's gonna have to be done to the classrooms regardless up there where the, uh, dust collection system is, so there's gonna be some money going to that somewhere. We have, we have the, the Avis heating plant came in with an estimate of four hundred and eighteen thousand, replacing two boilers, control system and testing it out. Uh, control, well, that's not it, the, the heating plant was four hundred and eighteen thousand, the control system, control that heating system was four hundred and sixty-five thousand, and that's just not the control panel, that's running rewiring and throughout the whole building, I guess, and replacing all the thermostat and everything else, right, it's a lot of, a lot of labor involved in that?
It's a lot of work, it, it sounds like, you know, Avis Heating Plant, Avis, the control work, but it's, they're essentially going to be touching every piece of equipment, building added valves, adding wiring, taking things away, adding new things on. Um, not to mention the whole, the whole control itself, the controls and building management system.
Okay.
And it's my understanding, Harry, that this is the only building that doesn't have the updated controls, and that's why we're looking at this. Everything else is connected down here, but that one is not, am I right on that?
Right, I believe. Because you look, you look at the control unit in the high school, and then you go up and look at that one up there at Avis, it's completely different. Correct, Mr. Wall?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, if you, if you take those, if you take those three items right there, you're looking at eight, ten, you're looking a little over one point one, one point two million roughly. You go up to Saliesburg, the heating plant by itself was six seventy-five. So you're looking at, if you did all four of them, it was two point one million, we only allocated one million to work with. So I think this isn't a recommendation from the, the committee, but I think we're leaning towards, and again, a lot in my ability, if you feel any different, but, uh, we're gonna go back to discuss it after the meeting, and I would think we'd have another meeting here, but we're kind of leaning towards the high school dust collection system and taking care of the Avis, uh, heating plant out there and the controls out there at Avis, which will roughly be, well, again, if you can backtrack some of the heating system there, it's gonna be roughly around one point one million, one million dollars. And then you have the, uh, I guess the professional services above.
Mm-hmm.
The study services, design and.
You're a little over one point two.
With everything, with all those costs up above, those costs up above probably would not be as much if we just limited ourselves to the one building and not the two, correct? So that would cut those costs up above, which is roughly ninety-six, thirty-five, seventy-five, one thirteen, one eighty. One, two, two something, over two hundred some thousand.
It's right there written for you, Harry, it's right there written.
It was three hundred and nineteen thousand, it's right there in front of me.
But that includes all four projects.
Right.
So if you take one out, you're lower than that.
Well, I mean, that's, I think that's where we, in our meeting that we had, that's somewhat where we, we ended up. And again, it's not a recommendation, but that's, I kind of think where we were leaning, till we get more money and stuff, but again, you go through these buildings and stuff, I heard the, well, we do have a cost. Now, this is here, you know, Avis, Avis Elementary for, uh, I don't know what that is, for like a four or five year plan, roughly five point seven million dollars to bring it up to where Hunt Engineering picked out the, the major problems. You look at Sal, it's roughly sixteen point six million to bring that up to where it should be, if you follow everything in that feasibility study. The middle school is the worst one, which is over twenty million dollars to bring that up to, I don't know if you call it standards or certainly not codes, I would imagine, if you'd be standard to bring it up to where it's suitable. So I mean, that's, that's where we're staying right now, again, it's not a recommendation, but it's, I think it's somewhat where I got the input from the other members, that that's where we're leaning to, towards and any other, Mike give anything else to, that's pretty much, pretty much online with what we were looking at?
Yeah, that's pretty much what we talked about and what, the way we were headed. I did have a couple questions about the scope of work stuff on this sheet that we have here. I'm just curious as to, so it says professional services, study services, Hunt design, and construction phase services. Who all isn't getting this money? What, where is it going, basically, aside from Hunt?
I, I think we asked that question when yourself and Damian and
Carla.
Where we met there, I think, and again, part of that, I think, was indigosurable.
But that's not answering the question, where, where is it going?
Professional services probably going to SiteLogic.
Right, that, that's probably Damian's worst position, maybe looking for.
Yeah, Damian, are you able to answer that?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Okay, yep.
Yes, there, there is, there's design services, if you recall, under the previous project, the district had direct, um, direct contracts with Hunt to design, um, the district paid Hunt directly. We've taken Hunt under us for this part of the work. So the, those costs go to Hunt for, um, a limited amount of design work, to our folks for development, pricing, um, the construction phase oversight. Uh, so when you were talking about, for example, the, the, if you were to do the dust collector and Avis at the same time, you would really only be paying for subcontracted costs for that, because we're already, you already own us being at Jersey Shore overseeing the projects under the Avis professional services. So really, um, all that goes to Hunt, SiteLogic, and, uh, there's a little bit of money in there from when we did the middle school study. We paid a kitchen vendor to give us some expertise on kitchen equipment. Those are the vendors that, um, provide that, those consulting services and professional services.
I think something else that I just remembered from our discussion the other day, uh, with you people being in charge, if we do go ahead with any of these projects here, any unforeseen, whatever comes up, any change orders or anything, it's, it's already, it's, you're responsible for it, if you don't foresee that when you make the estimate or something, I got any change orders come up during the process of repairing, remodeling, fixing things up here, you, you will take care of that. No additional charge to the school district.
Yes, so when we spoke about that, we, we had that conversation. If there was something that came up that, uh, for example, there was asbestos that nobody knew about, that may be different, but when it comes to things that we should have seen, that we have to understand because it's in the boiler room and items that are needed to make the boiler work and make work to code, because we're doing this as a design build collaborative with Hunt, and because we've been able to have our, have our subcontractors look closely at it and work closely with Mr. Wall, we work so that we can tell you that we're not asking for those change orders for things that would have otherwise been missed. So yes, that's, that's correct, you're remembering that, the, the way that we talked about it.
Okay. Anything else?
Harry, can you give us a perspective on like what the timeline is? Like what would be the timeline moving forward?
Timeline, uh, I guess it's after the committee, I'm gonna call a meeting and get together and see where we're gonna go with it, and then bring a recommendation back to the board, and I would hope that'd be rather soon.
Yeah, I believe what I heard in that conversation was they need approval by early March in order to make sure that we can get. Yeah, I believe, what I heard in that conversation was they need approval by early March in order to make sure that we can get this done over the summer. Am I off base?
If you, if you're working toward a February approval, we can make that work for the summer. If, even though we're, right now, we're working on the, uh, dust collection system, even if that, uh, lags and goes into April, we'll be able to make that work as well. So, what we'd like to do is see if we can get consideration for the board and, from the board in February. And then, uh, for the boiler, because that's a longer lead time than dealing with the dust collection system. And, um, then if we need to go out an extra month for the dust collection system, we could certainly do that. Right now, we have asked, we've gotten contractors, the cost of the boiler, the boilers at Avis went up about twenty thousand dollars, a little more than that. We actually absorbed some of it. Um, but the, there were some costs that went up since December to February, projected February close. I think we can hold those. So, um, that, that timing works, if it works for the board and the board's timing to be able to make the decision.
Okay, I don't see any problem with that. We can get, I'll just pick you guys email or something and get together here within the next week or so. Hopefully, and then bring it back to the board here in February, I would think.
Refresh my memory, Mr. Brookhart, I have to, this project has to be posted before a board approves it for ten days?
Yeah, we have that prepared for you. I can send it to you.
Okay.
I can hit my computer after the meeting. That doesn't, I'm, you're not bound to anything, but that's your public announcement. We'll give you a not fixed fee figure for what he was talking about. You can pretend they noticed. I believe your next meeting.
It's the twelfth.
Twenty-sixth. So, I would satisfy that requirement.
What has been posted? The scope of work that we're going to recommend?
It's not quite that.
No, it's.
Not that quite that.
It essentially says you're going to do a project and you're, you're letting the public know you're going to vote on doing a project, and it's going to cost something under a dollar figure. By law, you have to post that before you vote on it for ten days. It's always verifying it was ten days, so.
It's a paragraph.
Yeah.
A long scope of work at this age, you see, uh, the whole square it's going to be with building and Avis meeting time to meet.
Yeah, we, we did that before, when we did the HVAC project in the middle school and the high school. We had, we posted that same notice in the paper. It just has to be in there ten days before the meeting.
Okay, I guess, I guess my only question, concern would be the, the dust collection system. I mean, with things up on limbo like they are, I mean, I don't know if we're going to bring that back for a recommendation or, or not. What are you, what are you thinking, uh?
Well, depending on, you know, if the board, if the boilers, if the boilers went up forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Then that changes things a little bit too, for other projects. But in my mind, we really do need to do both because the student's safety and health is involved with the dust collection system.
If we keep it there.
Right.
I was going to say, things are kind of up in the air a little bit until we get a confirmation, know what's going on. So, do, do we, I can't see much sense in bringing back a recommendation to do the dust collection system.
Well, and I heard, I heard Damian say he's comfortable waiting until March, which we'd have a better answer.
That's, yeah, that's a little shorter period of time.
So, if I, if I may, if I may interrupt, maybe, I'm not sure if I was clear. What I'd like to do is get consideration for the Avis boilers in February. While we're working through the dust collection, making sure that, because we're, we're looking at price it, we're pricing it now based on what we've talked about. I want to bring that back to the district, really see what we've done and if we're, if we're doing the most cost effective thing to get the program and the safety that we're after. And if we have to come back and authorize a dust collector separate in March, that will be just fine. So, we will have to make one of those notices again for ten days that we're now going to consider the dust collection system at high school. But you'd have two separate votes. You won't have all those professional services in the dust collector. You'll just really have the contracted work. So, it, it'll be, it'll be a much, it'll, it'll be a, a much smaller situation without all of that professional service that would go with the Avis boilers. So, what, what I would suggest is, in one of the two meetings in, in February, we consider the boilers and we'll continue to do our homework to get absolutely the best numbers that we can get and the right scope with Mr. Wall and anybody from the board that wants to be involved with the dust collectors. Then we can bring that to you in March and you can, and you can, uh, consider that and we can still take care of all of our businesses summer.
Okay, so it's like we're going to, we'll get together here and meet and that and, so it's like the, uh, we're going to probably lean it towards the Avis boiler system, getting that fixed up and then, uh, hold off to the dust collection system until we find out a little bit more, wait until the end of March, somewhere like that. By that time, we should know definitely which direction to move and then, you know, what we want to do with the, uh, classroom as far as moving them downstairs or whatever.
And then, for just clarity purposes, we'd move Saliesburg to like next year?
Pardon me?
We'd move Saliesburg to like next year?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what we're going to do at Saliesburg next year. Uh, maybe I'll let Damian speak to that a little bit here. But, uh, you know, if you look at the cost on that, we're definitely not going to do anything, I believe, this year, is what we were talking about. Wait till next year or see how things play out with, with different scenarios here. Uh, do you want to come in on that? It was, kind of have a recommendation from Site Logic here on.
Yes, sir.
Saliesburg School. With the, uh, with the repairs and stuff that we have to put into it and, go ahead.
One of, one of the things that, uh, we were looking at is the fact that we have, you know, one boiler there and where at Avis, we have two. So, if one boiler goes down at Avis, you can still heat the building. The good news is that, uh, one, Mr. Wall's been doing a good job of keeping Saliesburg's boiler going. Uh, it also has better control systems on it, as we talked about. So, those are things, some things that are buying you a little bit of time. And I think, you know, I've mentioned this before, uh, to this board, you know, we all think about driving our cars and getting the most mileage out of them. And that's kind of what we're doing at Avis, or at Saliesburg. Now, one of the things that, um, I always think about is, what happens if the boiler does, does go down? How long does it take to get a boiler plant together and you, basically, you bring boiler plant on a tractor trailer bed and reconnect the boiler and get a school up and running again very fast. And I mean, um, you can do that within days. I think, um, we would, we would always have the ability to keep Saliesburg running. But I think that, given the fact that Mr. Wall's been taking care of that, you, you know, we're at a place where we're going to work to keep the boiler and get the most out of that boiler as we can. It's just one of those things that, while we're talking warm, safe and dry, that is very high on our, our list of, of priorities when we're asked to share with you what our recommendations are. So, we, we do have workarounds. We, we do have good care and good maintenance on the boiler at Saliesburg. So, if, whether we're, we're waiting, you know, it could be done this summer, but I think I understand that the board wants to limit spending. So, whether it's looked at with the next round of work that you do, et cetera, we're going to support Mr. Wall in keeping that boiler running and not having issues.
Basically, that was my question, because these were the top four issues that we had coming in, coming into this year. And, and we also talked about a million dollars. So, obviously, we can't do all four of them. I'm okay in the direction that they tend to want to go. I was just asking that we're not forgetting Saliesburg. I understand it can't be done, possibly, probably not done this year. I don't have a problem with that, but that's the clarity that I wanted.
Thank you. I, I hope I was clear.
I want to add something because someone mentioned that what they saw most critical in Saliesburg was the domestic water heating system. And the price that we are showing right now includes a new heat exchanger, a whole new setup for the domestic hot water, um, heating system as well. So, it's not just the boilers, it's boilers, pumps, var frequency riser pumps, a new heat exchanger and taking care of that, oh, all that setup for the domestic hot water.
So, yeah, to Mr. Allen's point, the reason that's, the cost at Saliesburg is so much higher is because that boiler is also doing domestic hot water. So, what, it's what she was trying to say was, you're not just doing a boiler exchange like you're doing at Avis. Because you would be exchanging, you only have one. So, not only would you have two now for redundancy, but you also have to address, take that boiler out, you have to address hot water as well. So, that's why that, if you look at that cost and say, oh my goodness, why is that so much different than Avis? That's why. Because you're doing multiple different things with that boiler. I guess from my perspective, and then one of the things that I need to take away from this meeting is, from the whole board, which is good to have all of you here to give input, are you comfortable moving that boiler and control project forward on an agenda? I mean, you have that, you would be under your million dollar mark at that point with.
Close to it.
The boiler and the controls at Avis. You'd be close, but you would be right.
So, can I just ask a question, kind of confirm here? So, currently, the duct work is plumbed into the E two hundred, E two oh one?
No, the, the C, the C one hundred classroom where Building Trades is, has a old dust collection system. E one hundred or E two hundred does, has nothing. So, what the, what the committee talked about with Mr. Bittner, and he's followed up with me as well, he's looking at, can we put, but even if we don't combine programs, can we put both programs in C one hundred? And figure out a schedule that they get enough hours and that two teachers have that one lab space. Is, we still believe there needs to be an upgrade there, but it should not be as costly as putting a system in a room that doesn't have anything.
Okay, so, what they're coming back with then is the refiguration for C one hundred.
Correct.
And we're disregarding E two hundred and two oh one at this point.
Correct.
For that part.
For that part, okay.
Something, those two classrooms are going to need.
I mean, they're going to need remodelled or fixed, yeah, because they've been used hard. Um, okay.
And we said, we believe it will be lower. We just don't know what at this point. They walk through Thursday, so we'll get you in a. And I think, based on what I heard, timing wise, I think you, that's why I'm asking about moving forward. Because I think they can separate it and say, here's the not to exceed costs for this, these items. We can put that on agenda and move forward, and then you can address the other project and where the funding comes from for that at a later time.
Mark, what part of the duct work in C one oh one is failing? Like, has it just been used too hard?
It's an echo for what they're using for. There's, there should be some smoke detectors, smell detectors in the ducts. There's not, it's basically a ducted, the dust collector that's outside and it's just piped inside. It's not, it's not grounded or anything like that like it should be. Lots of things that they looked at it last Thursday, updating any duct work that needs to be updated and obviously the dust collector. It's a lot more straightforward than the room that was upstairs, a lot, a lot less work.
That would have been put in around two thousand, two thousand and nine, so it's at a, so obviously, there's definitely upgrades that would be needed in a system like that.
Yeah, okay, well, if you, if you know what a dust, I'm sure you do, a dust collection system, it's, this dust collection system is within that room. And you can't make it airtight anyhow. When you blow that dust from all the sols, whatever they're using, it's going into that bag and that bag is not leak proof. It's, some of that dust is getting out this way. The new collection system is going to be piped to the outside, down on the ground outside, which is where it belongs. And that duct work going out to that collection system outside would be, should be, should be tight. You wouldn't have any of that dust leaking into the classroom areas there. It, it was, it was a mess. It was, it was, it was really bad.
And so, the, there's also another attached classroom to C one oh one?
Yeah, there's instructional space and then there's a shop.
So, they're also using the instructional space for things, like you said, varnish, painting, that sort of thing?
In E two oh one.
No, that's in E one hundred, E two hundred.
Oh, that's E two, okay.
He's, he was saying the reason, that's where you, that's where you, Mike was saying, the C one hundred classroom has a, the space has a lab and a classroom. So, we could potentially schedule two teachers in there at the same time if one's using the classroom and one's using the shop lab space. That's what Mr. Bittner is working out, that even if we don't combine programs, if the board votes not to combine them, we could still potentially operate two teachers in that space because there's two separate spaces.
But so the dust collector currently handles that whole area.
No, just, just, just the one, one long room. And then the classroom is joined by a door there between them. And then there's a storage room in the back of it with the simulator in there also.
Okay, so.
It's like a big rectangle, but the, the shop is in this one corner and it's, it's glass partition on two sides of it.
Right. And there's nothing in the classroom side for any kind of fume extraction or anything like that. Hence, they shouldn't be the same system anyhow if you are going to, you know, suck fumes out of the room. You don't want that going into the dust collector where you got sawdust and everything else, you know? So, that's another issue with how you, you know, that's two different setups.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
So, I had a question for, um, Wayne and Damian. Um, I had heard Damian just talk about being cost effective on the things that we're doing, which I, of course, I totally agree. Um, but looking at the sheet that has the three schools with the alarm, alert, caution, acceptable. And then at the end, there's totals there. Um, for Saliesburg Elementary, which I believe, I know there was a sheet that was given to us in times past that had the amount of years. Do you recall that? Yeah.
They added that to this.
So, down on that one is there. So, that is the, the years, one through five. I got it.
Let's go out to the right.
Yep. Okay.
Immediately, one to two, or zero to two, three to five, six to eight, yeah.
Six, yes. Okay. So, this is less than, in less than ten years, six to eight years out, you had projected sixteen million dollars to be spent at Saliesburg and twenty million to be done at the middle school. And I know there's more money in other places, but I'm just focused on those two buildings at the moment. And I think it was about maybe six months back at one of the Capitol Projects meeting that the cost estimate, just for what we were discussing now at the high school, Avis Boilers and Saliesburg Boilers came in at one point two. And in a small amount of time, that's doubled to two point one million. So, my question simply is this, obviously, as time goes on, it's going, these numbers, the sixteen million over six to eight years and the twenty million over six to eight years, isn't going to stay those figures. I think, I think we can pretty much say it's going to be much higher cost. So, my question would be, to be cost effective, in your professional opinions, is there any building that you have been to that you believe would not be cost effective in putting money into repairing them? I've never asked that question before, but I want to ask it now. Because you have been there. You're the engineers. You're the professionals. You're the designers. And I think it's important for myself to know that as I'm spending taxpayer money and making votes in the future to make important repairs to the buildings.
I'd like to tackle that, and I think that's a really important question. The, it doesn't have a simple answer though. Because warm, safe and dry constitutes, you know, kind of. Because warm, safe and dry constitutes, you know, kind of basic needs for an educational facility. So if we're doing warm, safe and dry, which is really what we're focused on here, those things, th- those things do need to be done in it, whether, no matter what building it is, to maintain warm, safe and dry conditions in any building, we have to focus on that. When you start to look at other, other schools, or, or the schools and you get out further, we, we have witnessed many school districts and, and, and you have done it as well, where you keep those systems going with good maintenance and, and care, et cetera, so that you don't have to adhere to the timelines and the recommendations, and we're just trying to squeeze more out of what we have. If it comes to the question of, is there a building that isn't worth putting money into, I'm gonna answer it this way. It's not, not a secret that the board has had to go, you know, the board has had a lot of thought on whether a, an elementary school gets closed, et cetera. That is not a, that's not a function necessarily of facilities and how good the facilities are, but a function of many other things. Warm, safe and dry apply to those buildings that you're not sure whether you want to keep. You still really have an obligation to some warm, safe and dry. If you're thinking middle school, high school, and I think, um, we, we've talked about this a little bit when, when we've talked before, the cost of building additions and building new construction has become so exorbitant that very few, uh, really, very few school districts enter into new buildings the way they used to. Because, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll show my age, when, when I started in business in the early nineties, we were building new schools, and if we spent two hundred dollars a square foot for construction of a new school, we thought we were spending crazy money. And now I struggle to keep some new construction under four hundred dollars a square foot. So really, it's two, two, two parts to the, two answers to the question. The first is, be, we have to be thoughtful about warm, safe and dry in any building. And then after that is, i- is there, is there a building that, you know, for example, are, should we be thinking about doing something else at the high school or the middle school? I don't think so, I think the cost of that would just be, uh, something that we would, we would all be aghast at. When it comes to closing one, you know, a, an elementary school, those conditions are slightly different, and we're back to warm, safe and dry, which is what we're talking about. I, I hope that that partially or somehow answered your question, that's a short question, it's pretty complicated.
You have anything to add to that?
I'm sorry.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Anything to add to that? Uh, I would echo what Damian says from the engineering standpoint, I did want to refer, I believe the numbers you're looking at, we've thrown so many numbers out here. I think there was inflationary impacts built into those numbers that it probably doesn't do justice to what inflation has been. Because I think those numbers came before inflation shot up. In terms of the buildings and closure, Damian gave the long answer that it was appropriate, like something simpler. Uh, the former students are dependent on thirteen years, you get their transportation, a lot of times that's what they lost. A lot of their kids are bused from the school, so it's, it's complex and something.
Thank you.
Michelle, I just wanna kind of add on to there. Boy, Harry, you are whistling tonight.
Oh, I'm bored.
Dang. If you actually look at these papers that they had given us, the condition reports, um, one thing that I noticed, um, especially when comparing the elementary schools to each other, which is what we have done a lot in the past. Um, if you look at the accept, like the asset condition assessment, there is, let's see, we have almost six pages for Saliesburg, and for some reason, only one and a little bit for Avis. But there's a lot of green on here that I noticed. A lot of things appear to be acceptable in their eyes. What scares me with what he just said is the middle school. Like, I feel like if anything, our elementary schools are in pretty good shape.
Compared to our middle school, I would agree with you.
Like, that's really scary, and you, like, four hundred dollars a square foot to build something new, like, I'm worried for the future on what we're going to do with all these middle schoolers. What if we have to, something, God forbid, happens and we have to push sixth grade back into an elementary school and try to accommodate seven and eight at a high school, just to, you know, update something in here that might not be able to wait? Like, that's, that was just my perspective, a different perspective, but that's kind of where I was like, oh, well, crap, what would we do with all these kids if something were to happen with this building?
Maybe I can expand upon the answer to the question that I was working on earlier, given the way you kind of attacked it with, what about the middle school? When it comes to the middle school, if, if there are major program needs that require, you know, areas to be redone, or even a little bit of expansion or something like that, you know, that, that's one thing. When it comes to school replacements, that, that's a costly, totally different thing. The middle school does have a lot of need that we've identified. And one of the reasons, um, that last year we did so much detailed study on the middle school is because we believed that that was a place that you were gonna look to find ways to, uh, make improvements after you solve some of the warm, safe, dry issues that, that were a concern. And what I would tell you is, because of the way the middle school, not only the heavy use that you have for it, of course, but the things that could be done in it, that, those things could be planned out over years and be done in the summer, so we don't disrupt the educational process, that, that we al- always want to do. I agree with you when you talk about the numbers and, um, I guess, you know, the numbers, the numbers scare us too. Because we, we see them and what we've seen since the pandemic, and we're all tired of that particular word. But what we've seen in the market since then, you know, it's one thing going up or another, and, and, you know, we're getting through shortages of things, although we still have trouble getting electrical components. It is, it is indeed enough to use the word scare and scary. And so I would agree with you that, um, it was our thought that once you get past warm, safe and dry, the middle school is, is where you would be looking, and that's a, a large part of the reason why we expanded so much on that middle school study um, that we mentioned in, in the professional services.
Any, oh, go ahead.
Anything else? I, I think, uh, our committee, if, if you don't object to this, uh, I think we've heard enough tonight, I think we're leaning towards the repairs at Avis out there strictly, but leave the dust collection system go for now, till later on, till we know what's going on with that. If we could, rather than have a meeting and discuss it, if you two good gentlemen are okay with, uh, making a, uh, recommendation, when Mr. Dr. Almer puts it on the agenda for the next meeting, for the, uh, Avis boiler system and
I think it's our only choice.
Or do you want to have a meeting to discuss it, you okay with that, or?
You, we talked about it the other day, so I'm pretty much okay with that. I just want to make sure that we don't forget the dust collection system, because that, to me, is a concern with the students, not moving.
Well, I heard.
I would be happy to give you a report on that too, um, in two weeks, whether, however we deliver that to Dr. Almer, et cetera, because we are working on that, and I promise you, we won't forget that.
Well, I can bring that update to a whole, a board meeting as a separate item, because I think the board then is gonna have to have a conversation about funding that and where that goes forward beyond this, but I, I agree with you, I, I think I've said to the committee from the beginning, that's my number one item, because it's an area where kids are using it every day and it's programmatic and it's important. So I'm not gonna lose sight of that.
Right, I, I agree, hundred percent, we're gonna keep that up there, that we need to correct that dust collection system, no doubt about it. But if you're looking at the Avis, I just said it up there quickly, eight eighty-three, uh, and then your, your design cost, everything else, we should be right around a million bucks, which is what they allocated for it.
Right, I knew the number there, I think, right? With all the services, like, that'll go down.
Yeah.
It's up being, uh, one million, two hundred nineteen thousand, all the services.
Is that what, is that where it would come to?
That's without the dust collection system.
With the services, the four things that we broke it out when you asked me about the cost, plus the actual numbers we previously gave. I know it's a million, two hundred nineteen thousand.
So Bill, Mike, we, we okay going ahead with that, having Dr. Almer put that on the agenda for the, what, first meeting in February, while we get it, we're gonna do it, get it done.
Yeah, I make a recommendation that we take it to the board and have it put on the agenda.
Will you read that, or?
Well.
Yeah, yeah, you just need to ask the committee for their.
I, before we do that, though, I want Mr. Enders to give the board an update on where the capital projects, the capital reserve funds are, so that you have an understanding of what's gonna happen.
Um, right now, you have, you have essentially nine hundred thirty-five thousand dollars sitting in your capital reserve account.
Nine hundred and what?
Thirty-five thousand. Uh, of that nine hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand of it is, is locked up into a CD until June sixth, which will mature then, I, based on knowing that you were looking at this project, uh, from the board approval that Mr. Bringley referenced in the fall, I had zero, including that we would be reinvesting that money, that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars when it matured in June, um, and we would just let that go to cash and set it in the checking account. With this plan, we will have to be going through this budget, uh, cycle with a plan of, um, moving some of the, doing a, a capital reserve transfer from the general fund into the, uh, capital reserve account. Because I just did some quick math, and you're about two eighty-five short.
And we haven't moved anything over yet.
You have not moved anything from last audit.
Okay.
You haven't done, done any moves yet this fiscal year, so.
And there will be some coming? Are you anticipating that there will be some to do that with?
Yes, I understand you have two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars sitting in your fund balance to move it. Just so that that will be a part of the conversation, a part of the process as we go forward.
Do you recommend we put that on the agenda at the same night?
You can, I mean, you're needed anyway, so you could, you could do it on the same night, and, um, so it'll, it'll be reflected on your budget when we look at it, the fund balance and everything. But the new board members, just so you know, I had it pulled up here, I unfortunately closed it. The audit from June thirty of twenty-three showed a ending fund balance, ending unassigned fund balance of just shy of five point eight million dollars.
What exactly is that? Is that like a slush fund, or?
Your, your unassigned fund balance is essentially your savings again. It's not committed, it's not, it's not tied to anything.
Okay.
What was that number then?
Uh, just shy of five point eight million dollars.
So, so we would have, we would have to move monies around to come up with a one point two million. We're not gonna have enough with the, uh, CD and the interest earned on it with what we have already. So you're gonna have to take some out of, basically out of fund balance, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And I think I heard you talking about the, uh, was it seven hundred fifty thousand that was in the CD? That, that's not gonna come into play until, um, after that CD matures and the cash will be available. So the, the first parts of funding the project will be kind of ordering the boiler and paying for some of those professional services. You know, let's say, um, in March, April, May and June, the bulk of the, the costs, which would come from that CD, would be after that. So, um, that CD being able to mature, there's not an issue with that whatsoever.
Okay, then we, we're okay putting on, like, Dr. Almer put that on the agenda for approval? I mean, I don't think we need a motion, that will be taken up at the, at the meeting? You guys don't like the deal, you can discuss it then and vote it down and vote it up. So.
I'm okay with that.
Put that on the agenda then, Bill, you're okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else, questions, sir?
Public comment.
Harry, just, just a reminder of the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, before, before we go to public comment, May thirteenth.
Oh, I see it's on here, sorry.
Six P M, it's right there on the agenda.
Sorry.
Yeah.
For the whole board, the work session.
Same as this.
And we'll probably have a meeting before that, we guess, to come up with some direction. Okay, I opened up the courtesy of the board, do you have any questions for us?
Got it, I got it.
Bob Pryor, Mifflin Township. I do believe the dust control system is good for the high school, because we got, number one, we have to protect the health, safety of our students and staff, so whenever that happens, I think that's a positive thing. But God help me, I'm gonna bring something up that some of the people on this board are pretty much stubborn on. But if this district really wants to, to be more cost effective, then why not move Avis, since those boilers are gonna go down, and we're gonna spend how much, four hundred and some thousand to put two of them in there? Why not move Avis to Saliesburg where the boiler is still good and it has a new roof? Maybe I could agree with that decision from the past board, if you did that. But did you know, fact, the closer a building is with student population nearing the designed capacity of that population in that school, the more efficient the building is. Does anybody disagree with that? If you take the total cost of any building and divide it by the number of students, that, for example, that's the student cost. And I'm, the last consultant that was in here, Crabtree and Rohr, they come up with efficiency ratings for all three elementary schools, I believe they were all under fifty percent. So here we are, talking about putting almost a half a million dollars in Avis. If you want to make a school more efficient, you put more students in that school. Because the more students you have to divide into the total cost, that's gonna be less cost per student to educate. You must have this consultant give you a percentage of efficiency for all three of those elementary buildings. And I don't mean to be an expert here, I'm not, nobody's an expert. But I'll tell you, when I worked for the Department of Transportation as a project manager, I was responsible to construct. construct projects in the multi-millions of dollars. My highest one, I believe, is 42 million dollars. I kept that job within, you know, budget, and I got the job done within the time schedule. I know what I'm talking about. Maybe some of you don't think I know, but I do, and I'm proud of it. But I hate to sit here and listen about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars more, and we, we don't even know where the school teachers' contract's going to put us yet. And we all know that contract was ridiculous and pushed through without even going to fact finders. I want you to consider those things. And also, I'd like to know the consultant's definition of a white elephant. Don't mean to put you on the spot, because you know what I'm talking about. Concerning a building, what is a white elephant? You don't have a definition?
I'm not quite sure I do, no.
It's something you keep pouring more and more money into, and it doesn't really do any good.
Mr. Pryor, I'm sorry, your time is up.
You look sorry with that smile on your face.
It is what it is, Bob, you know that. Oh, my God.
Thanks for hearing me out, but please consider those issues.
You do have some points.
Look at the other districts.
On this dust situation, is it considered to be an emergency situation as far as health and safety? Is it something that should be corrected now, and should be, and be treated separately and taken care of? Is that, is that, does it rise to that level of importance, the dust situation? Are they still holding classes? Are they, it's still safe to hold classes, you're still able to have some dust control, so it's not considered an emergency?
They would say yes, there's some dust control, it needs work, and what I heard was, we're going to get a cause, treat it separately, and I'll bring it back to the board.
Because if it meets the criteria for an emergency, you could treat that differently, handle it separately, and take care of it like right now. And I don't know how long this dust situation, I've never heard of it before, how long has this dust situation been going on? Has it been going on for some time, or is it just?
The system's not been upgraded since, what did I hear, 2001, so.
Since 2001, that's, that's, that's quite a while, okay. Well, I just, I just raised the question whether it reaches, whether it's considered an emergency or not. If it is, then it should be handled separately and taken care of as a separate project.
In other words, it wasn't, it wasn't brought to, to us until unfeasibility was done, but meantime, it was always there.
This, this might be a question for Mr. Enders. Of the 5.8 million unassigned fund balance, how much, how much was the excess revenue for the most recent fiscal year that bumped that up?
The fund balance actually decreased by about $300,000. Now, keep in mind that 300,000, and you'll understand what I'm saying, includes the $500,000 transfer did last year, so roughly had an increase of $200,000.
All right. And are we still paying out of this capital projects fund, the cameras?
Yes, there's one more payment due for that, it will be paid off next August.
How much is that roughly, I forget?
I want to say it was, it's roughly $60,000 per year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Michelle, if you would please repeat that question that you had asked with regards to which school, I can't remember exactly how you did it, and what, how you ordered it, but could you repeat that for me?
Do you remember?
I was just going to say, I don't have the greatest memory.
I tried to write it down, but I didn't, I didn't count it.
I had just said about being cost effective, and seeing the projects and the amount of money, and knowing six to eight years out, how quickly things are even doubling from every couple months, there's more and more money at the prices of some of these, how expensive things are, I guess I should say. I had asked Damian and Wayne if, in their professional opinion, since they are the engineers, if they thought that there was any building that really wasn't worth putting that money into, knowing that the one will be 20 million at the middle school, six to eight years out, and same at Saliesburg, it was 16 million, six to eight years out. So between those two buildings, it'd be roughly $36 million.
Okay, thank you for repeating that.
You're welcome.
I, I don't think I really heard an answer. No disrespect from Damian, but I think it was skirted around. He gave an answer, but he didn't give the answer to that question, so I would like to have that question go back and get answered with how she questioned it, right? So there was not an answer with regards to what building, kind of skirted around the three elementary schools? That wasn't the question that was being asked. So if the question can be answered that was asked, I would greatly appreciate it, and that's all I have.
Okay, I guess the next meeting will be May 13th, and we'll have to get together before that and get some direction here where we're going, got a lot of time. So, you need a motion to adjourn, or?
Nope, you can adjourn it.
You can adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.